Good evening, I have 6:30, I'm gonna call to order meeting number 1877 of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are live in the John Daly Room of the East Windsor Town Hall as well as on the Zoom platform. We have a quorum, we have four regular members present. Do we have any added agenda items?
We don't.
We do not. There was a legal notice. The East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda, will be made available on the town's website. PZ 2024-10, applicant owner is the town of East Windsor is requesting a text amendment to zoning regulations, sections 202.1, definitions 305.3 farm regulations, 403 and 507.4 permitted accessory uses, and warehouse point 404 permitted accessory uses, 405 temporary permits, seasonal events, 503.3 temporary seasonal outdoor dining, and 601.5 automotive uses. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. This was posted in the Journal Inquirer on July 8th, 2024, and again on July 15th, 2024. Okay, we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Does anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda?
Paul Lenders from 89 Main Street proper. Curious why you don't have a place on your agenda most other meetings too.
As long as I've been on the commission, we haven't had one, so I, I don't know, I mean.
I don't know.
If, if we can, we'll discuss it with the commission, they wanna include that, we will. Anyone else? No, okay. Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing them, move on to, oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. I'm sorry, we couldn't hear your name, sir, again.
Yeah, just curious, just curious for having a public forum, why can we not be able to discuss?
You'll have that opportunity when we have the public participation portion of the public meeting. This is just an opportunity, if you have something else you'd like to bring before the commission that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone else? Moving on to approval of minutes, we have the minutes of our last meeting, which was held on June 25th, 2024. Does anyone have any edits or corrections that they make? What then?
Um, I call your attention to line 56 and 57, where it indicates the town planner Ruth Ann Calabrese made the motion, and then below it in line 58, it said it was moved by Gobin. I would delete town planner Keller Breezy made the motion.
Correct.
Similarly, in line 132, it says Chairman Kowalski made the motion, and below it in line 134, it says Gobin made the motion. So I would recommend correcting that.
Can change it to requested emotion.
That would work.
Anything else? No. Anyone else have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we have no further corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Tuesday, January 25th, 2024 meeting, which June 25th meeting, meeting 1874 with the two corrections we discussed.
Motion to approve the minutes, do we have a second?
Second.
And by Dave, any further discussion? Bring on a call for vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anonymous. We have one application to receive this evening. It's PZ 2024-12. The town of East Windsor is requesting a text amendment to zoning regulations, section 817, Land Commercial Development District, PCD. This application will be reviewed at a future meeting. We have nothing under performance bonds, permits, extensions, or road acceptance. So we're moving on to our continued public hearing. Easy 2024-09, applicant owner is Kemet and Sons Construction, the Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Jr., located at 297 North Road, is requesting a special use permit for regrading and filling existing construction yard property, map 117, block 36, lot 34B and 34C in the zone A1, A2. Who's here to speak on this application?
Good evening, JR3JR Russo and Associates. Here representing the applicant, also here this evening are Peter from SLR. He's our licensed environmental professional, and Skip Kemet is here. Steve and Tim also here, who you've all seen, talked to, and heard from the last meeting. I think everybody's probably got a copy of Ruth's memo here, and there's some items in here that we need to go over as she has recommended right on the first page. At the bottom of the page, there's a few items that are listed, 1 through 10, actually. The first one is facility security and a gate, and actually, there has been a gate added to the plans. I don't know if everybody can see this. But as we come into the facility from North Grove here, 140, we come in, it's a paved driveway, and that's something that's important to remember when we start to talk a little bit about tracking pads. But we've got a paved driveway, comes in about 450 feet, so when we break off and head into the site. We have installed a gate at this location, which is really, just as we get almost down to where Phase 3 would be, and that gate would essentially block what is going to be the access road into the phased area. There will also be some other security features associated with the gate. For those of you in the commission who've been over there and seen this now since the last meeting, it's basically a wide open area. So although the gate is going to be there to block the roadway, the rest of it's fairly open. So there's probably going to be, and I'm looking at Steve, and I don't know whether it's going to be concrete blocks. It could be some old concrete pipe, which Skip has a lot of there, which is probably going to go right across this area to block the rest of it, so a vehicle can't just drive around the gate and get in. So the gate will be located further to the west, it's going to block the road, and then there will be some other structure, I'm gonna say, and it's probably going to be pipe or concrete, old concrete block that's going to block the rest of that scene, it's going to get in. So we've added the gate, the other structure will be added, and, and actually, we could probably add some detail and show that on the plan once Steve and I get our heads together and think about exactly how that's going to work. The tracking pad, we did add. There's in your regulations, a 300-foot requirement for an anti-tracking pad. That starts right here off of the paved drive. I didn't show it at first, honestly, and I knew it was there because I thought the paved drive is adequate. Quite frankly, the, the paved drive will do a better job than the track pad. Basically, the way it works is the track pad is some gravel, the trucks drive over it, shakes the truck a little bit, takes some of the mud off if it's muddy. When they get to the driveway, they're going to get up a little speed. You got a 450-foot of driveway before you get to the road, get up a little speed, that throws the mud off the tires, which is kind of how they operate there now, they sweep the driveway, does get muddy, they sweep it. The drive itself is longer than what's required in your regulations. But between the two of those items, I think it's, it's going to be like a belt and suspenders approach to any tracking that might happen of any material getting out into the road. Item three is long-term screening. And Ruth points out that the pines are currently located on another lot, which they are. The pine trees are located along here, along the back of this property, but it's also owned by the applicant. Skip Kemet owns both pieces, I don't think he has any plans on selling anything right away. And it's our feeling that we have added with screening. Now, at the last meeting, we did talk a little bit about this. And as I think I pointed out, right now with full leaf out on all the deciduous trees, you really can't see anything through there. What's it going to look like in the winter? I don't really know. I don't pay enough attention as I drive by, I think it's still fairly well screened. But a few felt more comfortable maybe with a condition that we looked at it in the winter, and maybe you might have strategically placed some more evergreen material, where you think it's a little thin, we probably could do that. Just so that come wintertime, we, in a few years, get up, we can have something that's a little larger and adds more evergreen material along that back property. So that could be done. Hours of operation, I think they're stated on the plan, and they're basically in conformance with your regulations, 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, no Saturdays, no holidays, no Sundays. The scale was also added to the plan, it's located right here, adjacent to the track pad. Not all trucks will go over the scale, the ones that do will come off the side of the track pad, go over the sale, scale, and come back onto the track pad. That's the approximate, it worked a little differently, I'm showing it. It is a portable scale, it's about 70 feet long, however, there are many other ways to weigh trucks other than this type of scale. And to be honest, this thing is relatively expensive, it's probably a half a million dollar item. You could use a portable scale that would go under each wheel, which is probably what you see on the side of the highway a lot of times when DLT is outweighing trucks at a stop or a pull over, something like that could be used as well. But they are going to have a scale, and right now, we're showing it in this area right here as they first pull in off the paved drive. Noise management, and I'm going to be honest. I'm not sure what's going to change, I mean, this operation's been here for decades, the construction operation's been here, there's been construction materials, there's been processing of materials, Skip has been here. His father started in the 40s, I think, and I don't see where this operation is going to change the noise situation of it. I don't think town halls had any complaints about noise here that I'm aware of, anyway. Although I will say the one thing that does sometimes happen, and I don't know if it's been an issue here, but I've heard it in other locations, when DLT is doing nighttime construction work on the highway, and they're milling. Well, the millings leave and they gotta go somewhere, and that could be at 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, 5:00 AM, 10:00 AM. When they're working at night, they're milling on the highway, and they'll be paving, that material's leaving, and it's gotta go somewhere. It could be that it would come here, we don't know the answer to that. Skip has a little bit of millings there now, and I don't think he generally gets too much of it, but there are operations that will take large amounts of millings, and sometimes that happens at night. But I would anticipate that there's not really going to be any change in the noise level here compared to what's, has been there for, for many, many years as this facility has been run. Sampling frequency, which is item number seven, and I'm going to defer to that, go to Peter on that. Probably the next one as well, number eight, stormwater and groundwater quality sampling. I'll jump down to nine, tracking the number of trucks, Steve and his crew are going to have, obviously, load counts on everything that comes in, it's going to be slips on everything that comes in, it can be reported to staff, whether they want it monthly, quarterly, all of that information will be there. And I'm assuming we're going to have the 60, 60-day limit on average on trucks coming and going from the facility, which you've always done on this, these types of operations. And then a temporary stockpile area. So we're looking at a phased operation with essentially three phases. Phase one is out here furthest in the area. And essentially, as we're working back, the stockpiling would take place, I would say, within the phase. As they work out and get closer to phase two, they may be stockpiling at phase two while they're finishing up on phase one, and it'll work its way right out towards the tracking pad in this area. So stockpiling will take place directly adjacent to the, or within the phase that they're working on. And, and it'll move, it's not going to be in the same place, it'll move as the operation continues to move forward. If we skip down through Ruth's memo, there's a couple of pages five that's highlighted on it. Access gate was added, location of scale was added, site emergency coordinator and contact info, that actually is on sheet five of the plan set where the soil erosion control guidelines are, that's the permit, it's there, it's, it's phone number is there for emergency contact. So that is. And that said, why don't I have you up and talk to you a little bit about sampling frequency, storm and groundwater quality.
Evening, for the record, Peter Shea, MALP with SLR. Just to talk about the sampling frequency, as the soil management plan indicated, our proposal is to do one composite sample, which is a five-point composite on the stockpile that's kind of pretty characterized for acceptance at the facility. That's the industry standard, I just looked at some, again, of the facilities around that are similar type of management that we're going to have, and two of them are in Massachusetts that are reclaimed facilities in which they're dealing with backfilling a quarry or whatever the standards are for those. They're generally, industry practice is that one composite sample per 500 for waste characterization. Another one is in the town of Wellington itself, that's very similar to this project, is again, one per 500, one composite sample per 500 cubic yards for waste characterization. On top of that, for sites that are with DEP approval with the polluted soils, you would have that investigation phase and those reports available that would be reviewed, that would have additional sampling as part of that investigation that you use to characterize that soil on top of what's actually stockpiled. So the one per 500 is for acceptance to the site, but that's all based on information on top of the environmental investigations specific for the polluted soils. If it's for just a general landscaping job or other job in town, that's where it would just be one per five, one sample per the 500 cubic yards. So I hope that clarifies some of those questions on that end. The stormwater, stormwater is going to be designed, we need to keep captured through the onsite, which on moving offsite. And as indicated, all the soils that will be coming here are going to be below that residential standard. It's basically good enough to be in the backyards of houses if approved. Hence, the actual sampling would not be required or needed under DEP guidelines, and the same goes with the groundwater quality. If we're bringing a contaminated soil, potential for reaching into the ground is a potential, but this is not going to be that. All these soils are going to be proven to be below residential GAPMC criteria, which means that they're not reachable to the groundwater, therefore, groundwater quality is not necessarily an issue for the site. Our interpretation, therefore, we're not recommending groundwater sampling as part of the project.
I'm going to steal Jay's map here, my name is Stephen Heath, I worked at the Kemet, yeah, for most accounts. Couple things I just wanted to just to clarify, just because I, when Jay's talking about the movable stockpile. So basically, when we're moving material around anything, any sort of capacity, we're probably more than likely going to be using a track machine, a bulldozer, or something along that lines. Why we like to keep those stockpiles when we're currently working on that particular part of the site in close proximity is it's, it's not conducive to move track vehicles a long period of time, or a long, a long distance. It just doesn't, it feel a lot of wear and tear, they move very slowly, they're crawlers, that's essentially what they call them. So that's why our intention is that when we're working on whichever particular phase we're working on, we like to keep that stockpile somewhere close where it is that we're going to work in. A couple other things, the tracking pad, which is effective, and certainly the, the road out to the road, which is also maintained constantly. If you're dealing with the spring, dealing with a different animal, or in August, say, you get a lot of rain, get a lot of mud tracking. But what we also do currently is, we actually have a gravel driveway that the trucks will be loaded to go around. It adds about 150 yards of tracking pad as well, included in that other part of that tracking pad that we're going to be using. I think everything else Jay and Peter had covered about that, unless there's any other questions that you might have for. Oh, and, and actually, you know, getting back to the foliage part of that, that property. When you, you're traveling, and it, and it may, the deciduous trees do certainly cover it right now. However, in the winter, if there is an issue, there's a height, there's, there's quite a bit of height there. So when you're driving by on, on 140 on that state road right there, it's, it sets pretty high, there isn't much of a, you don't get much of a view even in the wintertime. However, if they're, you know, they're, the board's more comfortable with an evergreen put in there to, to shore it up, then that would be okay, sure. But it's pretty well covered now. There's any other questions, certainly?
Jim, I'll start with you.
I have another question, I would agree, cannot see that area going by on North Road at 55 miles an hour at all, at all. Yeah. And to do a site visit, you know, a pitcher worth a thousand words, it's, it's massive back there, so.
Yeah.
Want to thank you for the tour, it was really helpful, and I appreciate how clear and meticulous you are with everything. I do want to flag on page two of five. Note five, you've still got the Saturday hours with what you submitted today. And can you help me understand what you said about the DOT millings in the middle of the night? If the site is closed, where do those millings go in the middle of the night?
Well, I don't think Skip gets any of it. I'm saying to you that there are many, many construction projects that do.
Oh, okay.
But we started talking about, there could be trucks coming up and down 140.
Going somewhere else, got it.
We don't know.
Yeah.
A lot of the towns receive millings, you know, here in East Windsor, you receive millings, in Arlington, they receive millings. There's a facility in.
Now I understand what you were saying, I didn't understand, I thought you were saying millings was.
Traffic at nighttime truck traffic in here.
Okay, I noticed when I came for the tour, you come in the paved driveway, and as you're sitting outside the office, and you see trucks take that right on, I'll call it, the road to the undeveloped site, you could see fugitive dust coming up off the trucks, it was not leaving the property line. The driveway was perfectly clean. Will the gravel tracking pad solve that fugitive dust? I know at one point, something was said about trees along there, is that first where you would turn right is open, but maybe the tracking pad solves it.
The tracking pad will resolve the dust issue, because they're not driving.
On the dirt.
Steve mentioned there's another just like 150 yards of, yeah, additional gravel beyond that, gets you well out into the site, so that will resolve dust problem out there. However, you know, if there is a dust issue, it will go in water.
Water, yeah.
It's going to be on the water, like, into the water, Skip has a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
With all the rain.
It was dusty that day, only when the trucks drove the dirt road.
David?
I'm good.
Um. Okay, I think where the question came about with this temporary stockpile question was, the last time you were here, there was a mention of if you received any type of, I, I think the word was used virgin soils that would just be turned around and resold again, that that was going to be stockpiled somewhere temporarily, rather not going into the site. So I think that's what we were asking for, is where is that virgin soil going to be kept?
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
It's been from the beginning of the yard, it's, it's isolated and separated. In the beginning of this area here, this is, this is the gravel over there, and where the phase three, we'll say, begins, and this is where we're going to, this is where the gate is. This is actually, I should have mentioned this, when Jay was speaking, we do have mophie blocks. Mophie blocks are simply blocks, a human doesn't want to move, they're, they're giant blocks, and they lock together. That's what we'll, that's what we'll end up bordering this with, if this pile here that exists, which is topsoil, is terminated, nothing can get through there, not even a track machine could get through there right now. So there's no access through that area right now, there's a, it's a, we'll call it a, a natural barrier, so that the traffic can't get through. There's only access right through here. However, in this area, in the very beginning of the yard, I could be seen from the office part, that's where any virgin material will be taken in, and that's where Skip has, in years past, has done his screening process right there, it's only, we only run that maybe twice a year, Skip maybe, if that, it's just on supply and demand and various other things, but it's, it's very rarely run, but it's, it's a part of the, the, the operation that's, it's separated from where we're going to be filling, but it's, it's, it sits right up in the front.
Okay, so that's, it is on the map labeled as dirt stock?
Right.
Um. Jay had mentioned as far as we could add a condition with, with screening and I don't know how we're gonna work Smith something in at the, at the last minute into this terms and conditions already. Would you feel comfortable just leaving it up to the CEO? Or how, how would staff like to see this addressed, if screening is required in the future?
It could be assessed annual.
I really think they don't need it.
Yeah, that's right, at this point, we don't see it, but if it were to arise at some point, would just include it as the annual site review and, and it'll be addressed at that point? And I think the confusion maybe about the sampling was, even though you said it's one composite sample, a composite sample consists of multiple samples, correct? As you described last time, is that when you take a composite sample, you're taking it from different points of, of a, of a pile versus just a single grab sample?
Correct, so you would have a stockpile that somebody would want to send here, you would do a five grab, so you separate it out into five equal portions, take a grab from each one of those, composite that, and that counts as your one sample that goes to the lab.
And that would be a 500 cubic yard pile?
It could be larger, but you would segment it.
To 500.
So you would definitely have.
Where those samples. In actuality, you get five samples out of 500 cubic yards.
Yeah, so it's five grab samples into one composite sample that gets the laboratory analytical, so it's representative of that entire base of material. entire base of material.
Follow-up question?
Yeah, how I digested that concept and I was very uncomfortable with the if a truck is forty cubic yards, you know, that's a lot of materials. But in the clarification tonight, what I heard was if what's coming in is very clean and not from a DEP oversighted facility, that one in five hundred cubic yards, although it's twelve samples, is what applies, but you're starting with clean material. I heard tonight, if it is not clean and from a site remediation project, then there is a DEP approved higher frequency of sample. So that's what made me.
Just to clarify.
That's how I heard it tonight.
So the DP part of that, you'd have to get approval through DP, which is one phase of it. But as part of that review, if it's a remediation job or a cleanup job, the initial part of that is investigation where they're doing sampling as part of their how to delineate where's contaminated, where's polluted, where's clean. So the only material that could come here would be from either the clean or the polluted, the contaminated would have to be segregated off and separated. So there's an initial environmental investigation that's not done as part of the approval for acceptance. That's just the environmental investigation that DEP oversees or an LEP oversees. We would then have to take the waste characterization, where they take that material that's as a clean segment, as a polluted segment, stockpile it. That's where our involvement would become part of this. They would then say, all right, we have these two stockpiles from these two areas, which are now from their sampling allowed to come, but on top of that, we want composite sampling or the one for five hundred. So it's actually sampling upon, upon the initial sampling.
Yeah, the way.
Almost confirmation that their investigation meets the criteria for acceptance.
But the way I digested the concept of the remediation standards was there's kind of a health-based risk assessment component. And that changes with health science, so that's always changing, but it's under the DEP review part. And there's new pollutants that emerge with the science like the PFAS and whatever else nano, whatever. There's just stuff going on in the science world. And those pollutants, um, if something is polluted, it's getting that updated scientific review and sampling, the DEP oversight.
Right, so.
It's already happened and been reviewed. And then you're doing confirmatory sampling on your end that there's nothing above a safe, clean.
Yeah, because, so for instance, if I'm the LP that's doing the review, I'm not going to take their word for it that the sampling coming from them is clean or polluted based just what's in the ground sampling they did. We want to make sure that stockpile that's there is, meets those standards. And then again, also on top of that is any material that comes here has to have the same kind of constituents that are probably out here. It can't involve anything that's not already.
In the ground.
So say we'll use PCVs is always my go-to here because there's no PCVs at the site. So any soil that had any detection of PCVs would be automatically rejected. Even if it's below those health-based standards, it's rejected.
Because it's a GA.
Yes, because it's GA and residential and it's not hero way. So that can't be, you can't put something that's. On that, yes. Even though it could meet standards and it could be put in the backyard, it can't come here because they're not existing at this site.
Like I said last meeting, we, they sample the hotspots, we get the overburden that comes here.
Yes, basically. You basically are dividing out your site and investigation. You have your AOCs, you have your hotspots that have to go to a disposal facility that actually handles contaminated material. Then you have kind of this overlaying for this, like a school project, just a soccer field that has some background pesticides in it. That's the material that would come here because then there's no restriction on the reuse of it. So down the road, you can look at that material as a pile that's going to be here and reuse it in any which way we, in the future development, potential development can be done. There's no restrictions on top of just accepting.
The only question I have is to clarify hours of operation. Couple different preferences I've seen. Sometimes I see Saturdays mentioned. Can you guys clarify what hours you are going to be open and what hours you're not?
Based on your regulations, Monday to Friday.
Yep. Right, right. No Saturdays. Okay.
No holidays.
So the drawing set will have to be updated to take the Saturdays out of that?
Yep. Okay.
As well as I believe I saw that mentioned.
In the general condition.
Yep, which it was. I just wanted to make sure we get it now.
Staff have any additional questions or comments?
Well, just for the record, because we, I, the requirements of eight fourteen, this table. And so I just wanted to have us discuss the traffic study on the record. And I, it's required by these, this section, however, special use permit has more detail on what will trigger the need for the traffic study. And so first one on here is generate, develop, development which generates more than a hundred trips per day. Fifty new parking spaces. A layout that would have circulation system that would affect how traffic operates on a public street and at the request of the commission. But I just wanted to make sure since we weren't asking for one and it's required by eight fourteen, we had something on the record about need or not need.
I thought in the first night of the hearing, it was stated that there was no net increase in traffic they already had. So it's just different trucks that come in. That's how I heard it.
I just wanted to make sure that we have it.
Because we're not going to be adding an additional sixty. You're limited to sixty as you are already currently.
Only other thing I just wanted to ask, we have the construction yard operation that's been going on in the forties or so. And the only complaint, one in the time I've been here was overnight activity on the site. And I believe in talking with you, Skip, it was DOT project. Yeah. Oh, I was talking about, we had one call into our office this year, in fact, with overnight work in the yard.
They were milling a deck to cut a bridge.
Okay.
He came in for a week. But it all went to my construction yard.
Yeah, that's what I was. Right.
Which we've done in the past and they built many one and different roads around them. It just happens and follows a certain time and you gotta do it. You know, they gotta do it. Not too long.
I'm to clarify. But it, you know, wouldn't necessarily be associated with the soil management.
Anything else?
No. Explained.
So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application?
While I'm sitting eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Yeah, I would, I would do this pretty carefully. Uh, I'm a hundred percent in favor. Does anything that promotes business in this time? We're gonna get one. Nothing like that is to make money. I think it's great. Everybody wins. If it's homework. My taxes can go down. Don't talk about the fighting, many battles. Thank you.
Anyone else?
That means very interesting. I'm in favor. It's just awesome. Have the family been here many years and I don't think you can put trash in the backyard. I know that it used to be, but that was town deal. Just think that, you know, it was in properly and then you should have everybody.
Any else? Is there anyone online that'd like to comment on this application? You shouldn't have any further questions that they need answered?
Good.
All right, if no one has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty twenty-four dash nine. A special use permit for a soil management facility at two ninety-seven North Road.
There's a motion to close the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
By Dave. Any further discussion? Right now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Yes, public hearing is closed. Okay. So we talked about a couple of things that we've got clarifications on. Uh, does everybody feel that the terms and conditions are good, that they don't require any modifications or satisfy our, our questions and commitments that have been made?
But I ask if condition number one, the site emergency coordinator contact information is needed since they said it was on sheet five. Oh, should I, should we strike C under condition one?
I mean, it's, it's just saying that it must be on the, on the milers, so it's already, it's currently there, so just that it should be.
I'm able to edit. And so the access gate, Jay talked about this, the location of the scale and the emergency warning contact information was added.
Yep.
After reading this staff memo before this. And so I removed those. And based on the conversation that was going on, I had put in there to clarify hours of operation. Does it, they've dealt with it in the plan?
Okay, because condition eight is correct, so we'd want to.
It would conflict with what's on the plan.
With the plan, so do we just want to say add D under other, say that plans will be updated to reflect the conditions of approval? Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
So, Dan, are there any conditions in the draft motion that need to be revised based on the discussion or can we proceed with it as it was presented? And that will work?
You just said we're adding that condition D.
Yes, I added that.
Yeah.
To my note here. And we're leaving one C.
That's on sheet five.
Yes.
That's what they said.
Yep.
Got it.
It is, it's verified that I'm missing.
Okay.
Yep.
It would read plans to revise to include the following to reflect conditions of approval.
Oh, so you want it in number one, not adding a new D.
Right, we'll get rid of A, B, and C because they've been added, so we're just gonna have all under one that they're going to be revised and updated to reflect the conditions of approval.
And then respond to your question and all the conditions of approval that are required and the regulations are in the, are in the motion.
Okay.
That you're considering. And they were all satisfied between the past year and the review of the plans and then information provided tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to make sure we, this, we did get a memo also from Glenn Norton.
Probably ours.
Yep. We did correct that, so.
And the fire marshal had no problem.
Okay, so all other, all other indices have been satisfied, so. Everybody good with this application? We're ready to vote on this?
Yeah, I'm gonna change the revision dates on the plans that are excited up.
And what section is that?
At the very top, it says under details.
Reference plans.
Yeah. So I will be changing those to.
So they're dated.
Right there.
Seven twenty-three.
Seven twenty-two.
So.
I'm just gonna put last revised seven twenty-three.
Seven.
If you're gonna update the plan, I need to change that date.
Because there's still going to be one more further revision to correct the, the notes and details. Okay, we don't have anything further. I'll entertain the motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-four dash nine of Kemet and Son Construction, Broadbrook, Connecticut, owned by the Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Jr. Special permit for a soil management facility regarding and.
Regading.
Oh, regrading.
That's a good broad.
Yeah, that's what it trip me up. Regrading and filling at the construction yard property located at two ninety-seven North Road, zoned A one and A two, assessor's map one seventeen, block thirty-six, lots forty-three B and forty-three C. The reference plans and soil management plan and drainage report soil management facility are all referenced and will be revised. Conditions that must be met prior to signing the milers begins with number one, plan shall be revised or updated to reflect the conditions of approval. And then two and three in the draft motion from Ruth Ann are incorporated. And then there are six conditions that must be met prior to the issuance of the, of permits.
Three, three conditions. Four to, four to six.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Four through six that must be met prior to the issuance of permits. And then there are general conditions seven through twenty-four, all in the draft motion provided by Ruth Ann Calabrese, the town planner.
There's a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. You have your approval.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a new public hearing. EZ twenty twenty-four dash ten. Town of East Windsor is requesting a text amendment to plan to zoning regulation, section two oh one point one definitions, three oh five point three farm regulations, four oh three and five oh seven point four permitted access. permitted accessory uses in WHP, four oh four permitted accessory uses, four oh five temporary permits, seasonal events, five oh three point three temporary seasonal outdoor dining, and six oh one point five automotive. Okay, so in your packet, did receive a breakdown of what additions, changes, and modifications are being requested, so Ruth Ann, you wanna take us through these?
I think the easiest way to go through them is the table that you have in your packet. But that's what's. So we have the definition section. Here. So people can.
Anyone? I'll follow you along.
That doesn't work, does it? Okay. So we start off a couple of things I want to address. In that section of new definitions, and these are definitions of terms that are in the regulations but not defined, so we're talking about things and we're just trying to put some, some context to them. But as presented, you might scroll down to where it says mobile home park. The mobile home park and manufactured home communities, I'm proposing to strike because the definitions haven't been developed in here, just kind of a placeholder.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
I was saying, I'll try really hard. I will try really hard. I'll go like this.
You go like that.
Um, I'm proposing that the mobile home park definition and the manufactured home community definition be striped because they were not fully developed, and they're in here, and it's this weird little A place, so I would like to strike those. As well as a little further down on that same page, there's a note to, to define front yard, rear yard, side yards versus their setbacks, and the text isn't in there, so I just wanted to take the note out because it's we're not looking to stick a note like that into our final writ. One of the things I want to get to is the definition of temporary event, because I know there's concerns about it. And I have a proposed change to this where it would read any event held on private property which is open to the general public with or without an admission fee, whether for profit or not for profit, period. An event may include, but is not limited to, any outdoor festival, concert, circus, carnival, rally, religious service, or pop-up vending. This definition excludes sites that legally exist with an event that is ancillary to the existing use. So what was removed was the one to fourteen days tagged on to an event. So that qualifier and, and company or organization picnics are cut out of there as proposed.
Okay.
And so if folks wouldn't mind, I'd like to go to the temporary event and seasonal event section, just as we're talking about that definition. So it's in the packet.
It's on page nine.
Page nine.
I'm sorry, that's.
You got me.
I'm sorry.
It's page, page eight. Page eight, for, section four oh five. I'll set it up there on the screen. And I have taken some opportunities to look at, we had a write-in set of comments and we've had some conversations, so if you bear with me. It, it reads, temporary events as defined by these regulations may be permitted in any zone up to four times per calendar year with a zoning permit, provided they are also approved by the chief of police, the building official, the fire marshal, and the North Central Health District. And then I would like to add, under A, approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission via a public hearing will be required, one, at the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer, two, for any event that includes amplified performance, an amplified performance, and three, for any event with a duration greater than three days.
But before, it was one through fourteen, right? Days?
Yes. Yep.
All right, so before we move on, so any, any comments on this that seem a little more reasonable? I mean, I personally didn't like the fourteen day number in there either, so I, I like the idea of three days, anything over three days has to come for a, a review and, and a public hearing. And the amplified performances too, which usually number one concern is noise, so anything that's gonna be amplified has to come for a, for a public hearing. I mean, anybody feel otherwise, or?
I think it's a good edit. Um, I think there's temporary events, however, is a wide span of things, from a kid with a lemonade stand in the front yard to, you know, a big carnival. And um, I get what the comments were about that came in, because some things are just no big deal, and some things merit a public hearing. So I think it's good to define what merits them. I feel like a carnival, whether there's amplified noise or not, is a big event and merits a hearing.
Which that gives the zoning enforcement officer the discretion, anything that's presented, and they, they feel that maybe this does require some public input on it, they have the discretion to do that.
That's really good, because I think there are things that do impact the neighbors, and there's things that are no big deal at all.
So let's say we get the Broadbrook Carnival back here, yeah. That's three days, usually that would be covered.
The CEO, the CEO would have that discretion to say, we believe that needs to have a public hearing.
Okay, right here, exemptions are schools, churches, and government functions, that's, that's none of that, so it's come through.
Correct.
Okay, and we all, we still have the same loopholes with the fire marshal, the building official.
I wouldn't call it a loophole.
No loophole. Checking balances, sorry. Yeah, shot gap. You got the fire marshal coming out here, you got the North Central coming out here, you got the chief of police and the building officials checking everything.
Correct.
Same stuff we always do.
Big traffic and big.
Well, parking's an issue, parking's an issue.
That's, well, right, the bigger the event, the more scrutiny it should get.
Like Joe's had his stuff out there years ago, he hasn't done one in a long time, that was a whole, he had a whole bunch of steps to come before us to.
Right.
Do that.
And what? Not to the public participation portion, sir.
Applies to what you're doing. It's a point of order. Do you have different information in front of you than we have out here?
No, we're we're making, Ruth Ann suggested edits.
I'm suggesting edits, yeah.
And we're discussing suggested edits.
They're new tonight.
Correct.
Okay, then, yeah, because I'm trying to follow, and I can't follow.
Okay. There's rather changes though.
You want to overlook them?
No, no, once we, we'll go through, then we'll open it up. I'm gonna be up back and forth a lot.
Okay. So.
So that covers temporary events.
Yes.
Okay.
The next those signs come up next in the definitions.
Okay.
So I'm on page three in the packet.
Yeah.
And we have been working on some revisions to the sign regulations as a whole to make them content neutral, and we thought it would make sense to update the definition section at this time to make sure we were addressed. One of the big changes is the word commercial changed the universe of what is a sign. That's the first change, and then we put in a new definition for ancillary sign, so that's like if you go to the car wash and it gives you directions on which way to drive, and it tells you this is where you pay, and it's like those, those types of signage will be ancillary, and that's not counted into your total signage for the site as we're giving out permits. And there's clarification on double-faced signs on how to calculate the area, so it's fine, it would be just the square, the surface area, it's one sign, provided you can only see one side at a time.
And, and I see you added both sides are equal, so as long as both sides say the same information, it's one sign.
A temporary sign, the temporary is added. It's not meant to be there on a permanent basis. That's simple. And then a wall sign, we've added, when attached, it shall be comprised of materials permanent in nature, including but not limited to wood, metal, vinyl, glass, or other hard material, because we're finding that you move a sign the beginners are getting tacked up onto the side of a building rather than a structural sign.
All right. Anybody have any comments or questions on the sign section?
Clarification is helpful.
So then the next section is the farm. Yeah, the farm regulations, three oh five point three. There's a new section being added here for chickens. And so the first changes you see are pulling chickens out of the first existing section of the farm regs that talks about poultry, because they're addressed elsewhere. So you see three oh five, three D.
Non-chicken.
She's, you know, non-chicken poultry, and then down at the bottom is another D, makes it confusing, but general livestock, livestock requirements exclude chickens. And then you see on page five is the new section E, keeping of domesticated chicken and the requirements for this. Danielle worked with the agricultural commission in drafting these, and they're the best of the surrounding towns' regulations. And so what this does actually is provide for smaller lots to be able to have chickens, where, you know, smaller space, you get to have chickens, but there's some requirements on structures where you, you know, so that you're not a nuisance to your neighbor. And so that's what that's all about. For if you look at section two, where it talks about any building used for enclosing the hens can be no greater than two hundred square feet, that gets it out of needing a building permit. Twenty-five feet from any street line, not higher than ten feet, located at least ten feet from any lot line, and that goes with an accessory structure requirement. Seventy-five feet from any well, which is really to protect your water from chicken droppings, I guess. And it is actually a health department requirement, the structures, right, have to be seventy-five feet from the well. Twenty-five feet from abutting dwellings, a hundred and fifty feet from any well underwater course, and contained by either a fence or landscaping of at least four feet high and enclosed to prevent the escape of the chickens or entrance of predators. So, and then it goes on to talk about, they should be constructed and all food products kept as to prevent offensive odors and the presence of pests or predators. And that the owners are responsible for restraining all the hens, any and all their hens. And so you would show this layout of where you wanted to have your chicken coop on a plot plan. And the CEO would inspect to make sure all the setbacks are met, and they can't live in your house. And roosters, just, they have to have three acres of passable land. And no predator alarms would be permitted, because that would probably be as much of a nuisance as it is.
Anybody have any questions or comments on this?
I have a question to make sure I'm reading it right. If you have to have twenty-five feet from a street line, that means if you have twenty-five feet for front yard, you can put it in your front yard with no.
You would have to have a restricted barrier to stop them from coming any close.
But as far, but you wouldn't have to have screening, so I'm thinking about in a residential zone. Should, if it's in a front yard, should there be either a, I'll call it a solid fence or vegetative plantings in a front yard?
We also have the twenty-five feet from dwellings, so you gotta have a fifty-foot, minimum fifty-foot front yard.
That's what our through is.
That would be an interesting setup, because you'd need a double fence in there. Because you need to have a fence to stop them from going closer to the house, and you'd need a fence to stop them from going too closer to the street.
Well, no, I think it could be one fence, and then you just put plantings in front of it.
No, but to meet the twenty-five foot from a dwelling too, you can't let them walk up towards the house either. So now you're creating a parallel of a fence line.
Yep.
It could be.
It wouldn't be.
Yeah, that would be.
So, yeah, I would say that that's the structure enclosure. But it does, it's that last bullet talks about contained by either a fence or landscaping of at least four feet high. Which is written to prevent the escape, but.
Yep, I was just talking about that as screening for what it looks like in a residential zone.
Do you want to put in a kind of verbiage, just saying if, if the, if the poultry will be, or if the hens will be in the front yard, screening must be provided to, to shield street view? That, is that what you're at the point?
What I'm thinking is, if it's front yard, if it's in an agricultural zone, no, I don't see that at all, but in a subdivision.
So do we want to put a designator as in an, in an R-one, R-two zone? Or do? You don't want one? Because obviously agricultural zone.
It's to be expected, right?
Uh, this is to get it into the smaller residential.
So, yeah, but, I mean, this is gonna apply to all zones, so unless we designate it as a
when you have it as all R-one, R-two. Or three A-one, A-two zones anyways. And you're limiting it to. And you're limiting it to half acre. So anybody with a quarter acre lot isn't going to get it anyways.
Alright.
Okay, we'll work on, we'll work on.
Something that's addressed the front yard.
The front yard. Yeah, exact.
Well, just when you start looking at these half acres, we keep searching. Okay. Well, my well is here and this you may not find a spot other than that to meet all the other requirements.
Good.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay. We can move on to the next section.
Okay. Section 403. Permitted accessory buildings and structures. We have a clarification point and this is page six of the packet. I might have a spare. You have an extra eating packet, so we'll find it for you.
This is all online or something? It's, you know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, so. A was been modified just for clarity that the following accessory buildings and structures are permitted in the rear and side yards. Provided accessory structure setbacks are met following the issuance of a zoning and or building permit.
Okay.
Right? And then down at number three. Fences, it used to say less than eight feet. We've replaced that with seven just to be in alignment with what's required from the building office, building officials office. Because if someone comes in and asks zoning if they need a permit and we say no, because it's seven feet or it's not less than eight. Then, you know, are they coming back to ask the building department? But we just want to align that. Yeah. And then there's a note in here that says fences shall not require a permit and shall have no, not have to comply with the setbacks. But it says, see warehouse point district regulations for front yard fencing in those zones. And that's because there's requirements in the warehouse point district that addresses chain of fence. So we just want to make sure folks know.
That if you're in that zone, there's additional requirements.
Yeah. And so that same definition or the changing from eight feet on a fence to seven. We will propose to make that change with definition of a structure. Because the fence at eight feet is listed there. So we want to change that to seven in that location too.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, that one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. So on to 404. This is 404 is the permitted accessory structures or use, sorry. And the modifications are made on page seven. And it's L, off-street garaging of occupants vehicles subject to the following restrictions. All vehicles on the premises must be registered. Not more than one commercial vehicle with or without commercial markings. Yes. Not more than one commercial vehicle with or without commercial markings. In any case, no tractor trailer trucks, semi trucks, buses, trailers, or construction equipment. Excluding recreational vehicles may be parked for longer than a 12-hour period and overnight parking shall never be permitted.
Okay. So. Again, this is strictly talking about residential areas. I think we should probably put a caveat or something in there talking about unless housed in a approved structure, because if it's indoors in the structure, then.
It shouldn't be. Okay. Involved. So that would be, call it.
Number one. Yeah.
Okay.
You could strike the word garage just above that.
Oh.
Think. If we take out the word garaging.
Word garaging. Off-street parking of residential vehicles subject to the following.
So, so what if a guy works for a company and he's bringing home a truck and a trailer, like say a guy from Aquapool. And he's got a truck and he's got a mini excavator in the back. What is he supposed to do?
So you're looking at the, the.
Construction.
Can't. So this is a fine line here. A lot of people do that.
Well, can we, can we tie this back into that for no more than 12 hours or?
Guys off all weekend. What do you do?
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't like that. And then they got the other thing with, with all vehicles must be registered. I get it. You don't want to junkyard your front yard, but some people you know, have project cars with their kids or whatever.
They're usually kept indoors in the garage.
If you don't have a garage. I get the whole junk car thing.
The other on the vehicles being registered, if you buy a new car and you move the plates to the new car and you're about to sell your old car and you have a number of days where you can have it in your driveway until you sell it.
The minimum compliance, I mean, Danielle's not going to go out the day the vehicle shows up and say, it's got to be registered tomorrow. So I think you know, it's not like she has the DMV system. She can't, she could see that that plate is valid. If it's a brand new vehicle, I'm, she's not gonna, I'm not speaking for her.
You're talking about.
Will replace.
Why you took it off, the car you took it off.
Yeah.
Right? And so, um. Yeah.
So I get the tractor trailer, semi trucks, like a car harvester. I get all that. But there are guys who come home.
Vans.
The fans with trailers on them. It's not uncommon.
The small pool guy, the small construction guy.
Long guy.
Long guy.
Well, so I'm working in two other places on regulations related to commercial vehicles and or home occupations. And this is in there. Like, commissions are sort of struggling with, what do you do? Do you lean into allowing people to earn an honest living? Or do you lean into the fact that when that same truck with that same person who's earning that honest living, which we all agree to, backs out of the driveway at 5:00 AM with the backup alarm and a trailer and all the equipment and the neighbor who's 25 feet away in the R1 has their windows open. And I'm not saying which one's right or wrong, but it's sort of, and one of the things that we've considered and talked about is the difference between a home occupation and an employee. Someone who has a business vehicle and a piece of equipment because they run the business and they take it home because they live there. Versus someone who's an employee of a business and takes home a piece of equipment. So a guy that's being told by employer, this is your truck, this is a trailer. A lot of times that may not operationally work, but there's a place for some of that stuff to go. You don't need to bring home a 25 foot trailer and equipment every single day and park it in your driveway. Maybe you can take the truck. Or maybe there's something that, you know, the way that, you know, the definition of commercial vehicle that maybe if he's just bringing it home with an F-150 and it's got no signage, it's got no backup alarm and it's got no nothing. Then that doesn't really bother anybody. And then the trailer becomes the commercial vehicle and you only have one, which is a lot.
Well, I, I get the reg just trying to stop people from, you know, running business out of their house. Like, I get it. You know? But.
I mean, I'm also thinking about the people that are on call for their business. You know, they're as an employee and they're required to bring home their company vehicle because you're on call tonight. And if you get called, you can't run back to the shop to get your vehicle to go out on a service call. You gotta, you gotta.
Storm.
Well, usually they'll have been the trucks over the line.
No, but a toll contractor, right? If they get it, if they have a contract with the state police, if they don't show up with a certain amount of time, they they go to the next guy. And so if you live in East Windsor and you've got to go to South Windsor to get the truck and then you've got to go to
you won't make.
Enfield, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a very, yeah, it's a very real issue.
So going on to the one with the all vehicles must, a person must be registered, like get that too. I mean, you don't want to have eight junk cars.
You don't want to have.
So how do we define that? Like if you got a project, one car? Or no.
How long?
Let's go into the public. So let's the public.
I mean, I thought at least if we put in there that if it's housed in a structure, then, then it's fine, you know, but obviously whatever's in a, in a garage, nobody cares.
Yeah.
But your point of not everybody has a garage.
Yeah, right.
But that's, so that's definitely an area that people discuss. Okay, and then.
RVs be the next. Yep, so on page eight.
Do we have a comment on page seven? They were striking.
Yeah, down, back on page seven. On under recreational vehicles.
Okay.
And our regulations had said you could only have one of each type of regu, of recreational vehicles. And so we're striking, striking that.
On the recreational vehicles that can't be in a front yard. I can see having a setback from the street because you don't want it blocking the view of people, you know, able to see what's coming and going. But if you have a rear lot that is way back from the street, is it still a problem?
Do you want to come up with a minimum setback?
That's what I was thinking. Should there be?
It's 100 feet or you throw, you throw a number at it, you know, if it's, it's 100 feet back from the road. It's not gonna, it's not gonna impede visibility or anything like that.
See, I, I don't like any of that. I think if somebody spends 40, 60, $80,000, they should put a parked RV right in the driveway.
I do if it doesn't block the sight line.
You're on a corner or intersection.
I understand sight line. I get, I get the sight line, but you know, if it's, if it's registered, I think it should be able to stay in their, in their driveway.
I do if it's back far enough.
Not on their side yard or their backyard. Those people mean, go camping with their kids and their family. It's family. I mean, this.
Oh, I, and they're not unsightly. They're.
This isn't, this isn't Greenwich, you know, where for farm community, I, I feel that they should be able to park in the yard in the driveway. But I'm just one of four.
As long as, as long as it doesn't impede line of sight, you know, so. That's why I'm thinking giving us a minimum setback. So we don't have a line of sight issue.
Okay.
If you're on a curve and you can't see around the curve because it's right at the end of the driveway.
What a lot of people would have.
Driveways that short, when your truck already being parked in your driveway, you impede that line of sight. If I spun my F-350 around backwards and backed into my driveway, that would be impeding the line of sight.
It would.
Every bit as high as a camper. So you're saying I can't put a camper in my driveway, but I could park my truck and impede the line of sight.
I feel like you shouldn't impede the line of sight. It's a safety issue for the neighbor coming out of their driveway. They can't see.
But that goes back to how development was built in the first place. So we're using this to fix a failure.
Of the street design.
Of the street design and impeding that on the individual.
I think something that's, sorry. Something that's different is that RVs don't come and go. Your truck does. And your, an RV is also the size of a small ranch in some cases, right? So you have something that could be 10, eight feet wide, 10 feet tall, 40 feet long. Your truck has probably more points that you could see through it on and, and probably doesn't sit, for example, all winter. Right? An RV may come in at the end of the season and it's registered, but it's going to stay there until they use it again in the spring. And so I think there's a little bit of an expectation that a vehicle will come and go. So just probably why it's a little bit.
Maybe is the key word here stored that? So are we talking a difference between storing and parking? Because.
Hmm, that's an interesting way. Yeah.
Difference between parking and storage.
In relation to. Uh, they found this.
Cause I mean, I think somewhere else we addressed the, you know, it could be in the driveway for five days or something.
Yeah.
Such equipment may be parked in a driveway of a residential premises for a period not exceeding five days to allow for loading and unloading.
Okay.
Storage shall be considered beyond five. So if it's, you're getting ready for a trip or you just came back from a trip, you can park it there five days. No questions.
Okay. So maybe that satisfies that now the storage part of it becomes the setback requirement. So we're not impeding lines of sight or.
So if you got a driveway that's 100 feet long, like you need to get to your driveway.
You can, as long as, as long as you're not parking it by in front of the street. And I don't know what the magic number is, but we just will kind of figure out what, what the right setback is in order to get.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get some input from.
I understand what you're saying. We'll do some recrafting.
Okay.
Okay. In that same section with regard to recreational vehicles or trailer, camper trailers. Number four was added. And it reads the zoning enforcement officer has the discretion to issue a temporary zoning permit for no more than 90 days. For those situations where circumstances are considered to be extenuating, which may include, but are not limited to disaster, emergency health situations, seasonal weather conditions, weather induced property conditions such as heavy rain, exacerbating wetlands, you know, issues. This was done to address a few situations that we've had. We've had people who were sick and had family members. We've had houses that needed some renovation. We've had situations where campers were sinking in the yard due to wet conditions. So this was some, an option to have the zoning enforcement officer be able to issue temporary. Yeah.
I think that's good because if some.
Yeah, like.
Roof gets ripped off in a storm, you know, and they, they can't live in their house till it's fixed.
They got a chance.
Yeah.
And at least live.
Yep, yep. Yep.
And we've talked about the temporary events already. Section 503 is the temporary or seasonal outdoor dining. We added this section born out of COVID and the executive order was, was ending. And so we put in an opportunity to approve outdoor dining through a zoning permit. And we had intended on putting or including food trucks within this update and we missed it. And so we just putting it in now so that someplace like Problem Solve could have a food truck or, you know, like that. Okay, the last one is on 601.5, it's on page 10. Automotive uses, parking requirements. So these are car dealerships, et cetera, service yards. All parking spaces for vehicles being parked, displayed or stored shall be shown on the site plan. That's the original wording and we're proposing and no vehicle shall be staged where a space has not been previously approved.
Down the grass.
There you go.
Anywhere.
Kind of be in a true parking spot.
Right.
Okay. I think we've kind of got an idea. We have a couple of areas that we want to revisit and tweak, but all in all, I think it's a good first run. So this is a public hearing. I'll open it up to the public. If anybody would like to comment on these proposals. I'll open it up to the public if anybody would like to comment on these proposals. Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
It's been there for ten years. If it's been there for three years, we can't ask you to move it. Okay.
I have one more. Just about project cars. And all they have is done one. Have to get several of those. To do work. But you can't always get everything. That's it.
Anyone else? Go ahead, ma'am.
Looks brown, checking, come see chicken poop, it's on our house, it's on the road, the neighbor's yard. Who's from policing like someone is snap on two of that and parks his truck, it's like, it's up.
Well, it's been.
Um. You know, it's from the guy who's living. It's here twenty-four seven, and he's not out of love. It's, you know, all even on, like, in the streets, guys, like. His family, says snap on two's, um. It's my neighbor, guys, crazy, this decent guy. By neighbor's family, four hundred fifty thousand dollar home. Sounds like slum, but he leaves it like eight in the morning, it's almost five thirty, six thirty, seven o'clock, right? Trucks there all the year, right? You go to strictly person people. Who does this? Who goes around checking all this stuff? Or did you line and hit the common, like?
You got me there.
The only. The zoning enforcement officer will do sweeps, issue base sweeps across. For instance. Signs, sign sweeps, say, okay, I'm going to deal with. All these temporary signs that are out of compliance, and everybody gets the same warning and the. That she'll do her inspections and then get in touch with folks if they, she found something, and then she works with them. Um. There's no, um. Surveillance of trying to find, um. A truck that's parked in a driveway. There's some stuff that. You can't miss when you go by, that, that's a violation. Um. Most of it's complaint generated. Yeah.
So your staff, your staff on guy won't be in violation, he's allowed to bring one commercial vehicle home.
The, the regulations I was going to bring up, it says no more than one commercial.
Take his own truck home. It, to, to snap on a truck.
Right. But one, one vehicle, one commercial vehicle is not an issue. Yes, sir.
So hypothetical. Yeah, two acre lot. And. I want to work on some cars. Where in my backyard? Why isn't it anybody's business? Don't get it. I look at it as it's on my property, not bothering anybody. Go away, take your government and teach it the town hall where it belongs. It's none of your business, how many whatevers I feel to work on. None whatsoever. Because it's a non-issue. Making an issue out of something that doesn't exist. So whether a zoning enforcement officer happens to see it or not, so what? Who cares? I don't get how it bothers the public. It doesn't. So therefore, nothing like all vehicles must be registered, it ever exists, it's nonsense. That is no way to treat people. My property is my property. Not your property, not the town's property. I got a deed on file. In the safe, it says I own the property. What I do on it is my business. If it's not affecting somebody adversely. Then nobody else should have anything to say about it whatsoever. And that's true of all regulations, no matter what they are. You're going to run into some battles. If you want to proceed with this, I think you're heading for trouble, because you're trying to control. And control is not the answer for treating your taxpayer citizens appropriately. So in my opinion, throw the whole thing out, forget it. Okay? And an ordinance won't fix it, because you got exactly the same problem, trying to define, define, define. And the next thing you know. I can't believe that we don't think that this piece of crap is sick enough. Zoning regulations, it's had enough garbage in there so you can hardly turn around without somebody saying, you can't do that. This is not the way to do things. I'm against it totally. I don't see how it's of value. Right? Now. I agree with some things where something is a hazard. That has nothing to do with this whatsoever. That's outside the realm. A hazard is a hazard, and it has, however. I've got a hunk of sharp metal in my yard. And it's considered a hazard, because my neighbor might go there, hurt themselves. That's their fault, not mine. They don't belong there. I would say that I don't want anybody coming near my property telling me I'm doing something wrong, because that's not going to work. I'm going to fight. I'm not interested. Regulations don't mean squat if you're stepping on people. You can't do it. I'm totally against it, even though a court may say, well, you know, the town approved this. No, the town didn't. It's you people up here that get to approve these regulations. I don't get to approve regulations. I don't get to deny the regulation. I think I should. I think all zoning regulations should be required to go to a town meeting, because that's our form of government. Not. Five, six, seven people who are volunteering, I'm not criticizing you for sitting there. But I think you're overstepping the area, and you should back off. Okay, I'm done. Next up.
Yes, sir.
Jeffos Godzina Street. Thank you all. Definitely, I had to do that, saying it's, it does seem. We have ten minutes to cut this. That would be able to dig in.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you this time, sir.
So, only had about ten minutes. Sitting chickens. Trying to make up some huge, really small property, have them, and we don't have it. Strong, just figure out hundred feet by hundred feet well, other stuff, you're telling. You know, if you want people to have chickens, you really want people to be able to have this opportunity. You gotta kind of look at stuff, it deals well, I guess it's probably the North Central Health District. All right. You have three hundred foot well, most pieces, get down to that one. That would probably contract, nothing, it's not getting down. But time goes old, so everything else, maybe fifty feet and above, we'll be happy. But take a lot of that stuff that you look at a little bit more. Also, you need to understand how. The way I'm reading it, it kind of looks like a building with the chickens. Enclosure, the scene closure in the building, or do I want to fence my yard? Cause I'm sad, are they the same? Or are you just talking about actual structure?
Chicken coop?
Chicken coop. No, it says no free, so you're basically just going to stick in the box.
It's good. It, it asks for fencing too, to keep them.
So they don't leave your property.
Okay, so then, but I mean, that portion, I would be figured that part out. I could sound to the tenth, you would accept that. Plus small problem. At bigger acre, gonna be seventy-five feet from the well, so if that's around that. It's where, and rescue property, that really fence, you really have to just draw this out of paper and tape it up and see what's really reasonable, it's not. Uh, on the four oh four L one, unregistered vehicles. That's kind of an issue too. My reason is, I got kids. One lives in California, college, another one's in college. They come home, they've got their own addresses, and they're here for the summer, you start moving out, since they don't have a major speed. Plus, physically, seeing a drive too much. Um. So I think some of this stuff needs to look down a little bit further, kind of into detail. But I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it, it's kind of, kind of dry, I don't say about registration. They're here for the summer, it sounds like. Um. Those two, one commercial vehicles. It's one commercial vehicle. I know you guys aren't working on that. My wife and I, fiance and I, have one feet of our homes. I've got five people in the yard, she has a vehicle, you have another company. So what happens if you have two people to accomplish, she might build a driveway, I'm there. That starts to become an issue, well, she can have a different side, not so personal. It's hard to buy the same touch time, hurry vehicles. You know, a lot of insurance policies wise, you have that, see the insurance, everything else, I mean. Big companies, but one, but these, I'm not a key ability. I'm not a big company. Everybody's kind of a one man show, very small companies, and we worked together long, so you've got to be really careful of those rights issues too, or. The fishy slices, it's that way. It's something to both traders, the trailer, I got like a twenty foot trailer in the back home, back of the truck, the size of that's consumed with, I can choose well. They brush all right, thirteen acres, brush all, and all that stuff down here, so it's whatever, if you. Big, the verge, right? Be careful of the verge. Sale of two vehicles to your, yes, I don't think that's how it is well. But last year alone, I bought a van, sold my van, I sold her car, bought a car. And then the son sold his, but that's three cars, so I'll be invited, issue, I'll, to sell two cars. I can give you a purpose, I mean, you want people letting in a garage in their house, totally understand. The same, leaving, half the time, most of the codes slash. Yeah, going all the time, it's, in your tool, in your interpretation. Yeah, maybe it's too open or too tight and dry, you're not thinking about all the various, there's certainly a lot of tensions, some. I mean, I agree with all. But, but it's small. It really doesn't mean as much, it's not even true, uh, chickens, it's kind of. So. Thank you, sir. That's it, thank you.
Sir. Did you please identify yourself, sir?
Favorite. People can talk their things, that, that. As far as. The daily things. That's something we do. That's. Are not odds. You know, said. People, sorry, said that, you know, if I need more than one car, I need one. I see it as if the car is out of sight, out of mind. Not nuisance to anybody, you can't see from the road. It's maybe housing something, or is some of those, I got, we. Why is it going to be an issue? Gentleman heads in here, he's got a trailer in the back, I've got a back home. I've had it for ten years, I'm there, you know. So to fix my property and. All the permits, I have a full mirror, I use that machine, the gutter drains and everything else, so, what am I? What, property, my apartment, but, but I, so, so. I, I look at it anyways. I can see where some people might look at it, you know, you're the one here, back of the lawn, happening, you know, how's that person making a living, you know? Yeah, he's got a vehicle, he owns his own house, he owns his own business. He's got a truck, he's, you know, God bless him, they get up and want to go to work, you know, and try to make a living for the rest of their family. But, you know, there's always that one neighbor that's going to call and complain, America person's truck back up, you know, you gotta hear it. I don't, I don't care where that is, what state you're in, what town you're in, there's got to be people that complain, it's just the way it is. But if, you know, if, majority of people are doing the right thing. And, and not creating nuisance, and providing here for the town, you got, you got people paying taxes, you got some, what people make a living, you know? I will see if there's any issues, and if it's not causing anybody problems. It shouldn't be pushed out. I'm saying, you know, I, I agree with Mr., is it Mr. Thursday?
Yeah.
What people, how the comments are compared to cats, you know what? We've got to look at things. Um, like, you know, a thousand foot view, you see how like, add double view. Cause, when people look, when you cut up someone's property, it might look different. You know, from what, you know, they have the well here, you might have a well over here, that might restrict that person doing something with their chickens, and they want to have, you know. That, we got to look, I was going to unpack everybody, what decisions are made, from them.
Anyone else?
Uh, Tristan Smith, those were having them. Um, I just was looking for clarification on the part of the chickens. Where someone would have to come out and do the layout of the hoop and run. Is there a fee involved with that? Is there a timeline? If a chicken coop may have to wait three weeks for someone to come out to prove it? How does that work?
It would be the zoning official, um. Would come out. Um. And she does, it's farm stand. You need the right section. To make sure, like. Those setbacks were met. And it's, um, an administrative approval from the zoning official. Just making sure that. All the conditions that were in the regulations, if they're passed, um, are met.
It's five feet.
So how does that work?
You know, it doesn't say permit. It's. How does that work?
Right, town, and is there, you're going to have to ask them to sign?
Yes. So, um. You would, the regulations will dictate out, and you would, um, because she's asking for. A sketch. Of where, at the enclosure or structure to be on the property, so that she can assess the setbacks.
Yeah.
People, they can't afford to buy the eggs, and once you get chickens, you get kicked. So, so the officer has to come out and approve that.
This is for new applications.
Yeah. Because, I mean, they use whatever scraps they have around. You don't go out for a chicken. It don't look cool.
It's the location.
All mental location.
Location. So, if it's put together with what's available. Location. Right?
Is that structured, Mark? With that structure, think about. Is that something that's taxed?
It won't be, there won't be a building permit issued for it, and that's the, the line to, um.
It's under the square footage requirements.
Yeah, it's written to be less than two hundred square feet.
Yes, sir.
Joshua Blesky, three fifty four Ras Street. Uh, I think with the commercial vehicle definition, we can, can't have. Vice versa. How about a farm right next to my house? There's a lot of times that the farm will break a piece of equipment out of the farm, we have enough to get it back to my house for the shop. And, um, you know, it's a hierarchical community, I'm always going to help them out. And I'll work on that piece of equipment at my house, or vice versa, I might have a push hawk at my house, and I can get out in the morning to go push hawking farms. And a lot of people who run small businesses as well. They might have a commercial vehicle where it says commercial plate, but all it is, a service van. He's going in and out every day, and there might be, a sign might be in the business as well. You have two service vans there, you know, what's the definition? Is it just like you're saying, oh, this F one fifty is okay, but. You have two service vans there, you know, what's the definition? Is it just like you're saying, oh, this F one fifty is okay, but. It's truck with the trailer on it goes out more along, it's not a trailer, I feel like it's really, really fine line that, you know. The commercial vehicles, and then also. People having like backyard, back those and stuff from construction projects or snowblowing their driveway, vice versa, like it's. It's a very, very, very fine line, you know, we're a small community, everybody in the town and. You know, a lot of point, you know, the dad, the good people, honest people, good colored people. And. No, it's, it's just, it's. High line, that's all.
Can I answer that? Being in your, your. As you know, I'm a contractor too, so. Once, once you get one commercial vehicle. That's fine, you can take it home. Once you go with certain employees. You have to get out. You can't bring two commercial vehicle homes. Home and have employees come to your house. That's. And I just, I looked at regulations very thoroughly. So I'm, I'm out on Wagner now, paying a couple thousand a month for rent. I mean, I got a big three car garage, I could have my business there, but I, I can't. I know a lot of people do. It's, you know, so that's where the line's at. Soon as you're getting employees. More than vehicle, then you're supposed to get out.
I guess I meant like. If father works for E and T electric. And son is an HAC, your friends are different.
That's fine.
But it's two commercial vehicles, I wasn't saying like, of course, you're probably right there. Cable or vice versa. Empire, their backyard, that makes perfect, perfect sense. I was saying it's multiple people, family, different.
I'm, I made a note that we'll, we'll look at possibly changing it to one per resident or something like that. So if you have multiple residents. One per resident, we'll look, that's one of my suggestions that we may. Look at that way, just saying, you know, you know, a family of four contractors living together, you get four.
And then like with the construction of it. If somebody rents an excavator or a little bag of or something for a weekend. It's for lots of more vice work, yard work. Technically, to look at it at face value, it's a piece of construction equipment. It's at their house. For more than one day. It's, it's another very, very, very fine line of that.
I think the word, I don't know if I would go back, I think specifically you're talking about storage.
And that's not the intent of this commission. Look it off. Nobody can respond that quickly. Yeah.
Definitely incorporate the word personal use into that. So if somebody has a piece of equipment that they've used for maintenance on their property. I think this whole, this whole regulation is to deal with commercial activities.
Right. Yeah, and a lot of that, I mean, honestly, a lot, most of the changes are meant. To make things easier.
Right.
And so we're looking at what was there already as if it's. It's an issue to be talked about for sure, because those regulations are open for revision. But we were working with an existing draft and modifying it, so. Um, it's good to hear the feedback. Uh, as we're, as we're opening drafting, because. We're trying to fix what. As um.
I mean, the, the overall intent is to try to protect home values of the neighbor. You know, the kind of, you know, some of my neighbors doing all this stuff and it's destroying my home value. So that's what I'm kind of trying to look at both sides, you know. You, you want to live and let live, but if you're adversely affecting the property value of your neighbor, you're kind of not letting him live. His way too.
Okay, you're right. Let's talk about the ban solar vehicles. Okay, talk about the boundary. Forget that. Please bear with me. You're going to have to educate me on some of this. Okay, if I see panel four, see two other people. And so the people I'm assuming are the zoning enforcement people. My friend. No.
Town planner.
You're a town planner? You're a what?
Consultant with the town. I'm not the zoning officer.
You're a very good.
I do, yeah. I work part time at the town.
Okay. So. Who was the zoning enforcement officers of town?
That would be Danielle Hudrow is our zoning enforcement officer. And the planning department. I have enforcement. I have enforcement delegation. Yes, for the, for the zoning regs. For the zoning regs, and I'm, I'm delegated to enforce. Danielle is the enforcement official.
So there's two people, so.
That's, that's it.
Do you live in town, man?
I do not. No.
Oh. So you're just work, this is your job.
Yes, I am the town planer. Your zoning enforcement officer lives in town.
This is, this is your job. Well, I live right, I take it right.
Yes, we have to.
You guys born in Spencer?
Born and raised. Fourth generational.
No?
No.
No. One man was been here for four generations. I've been here, this is five. I've got many people in the cemetery, many generations, okay? I never lived anywhere else. I want to stay here.
Been here forty years.
Yeah.
Most of my life.
That doesn't make them incapable.
My point is this, okay, we have people here making our plans, but yet they don't live here. I've lived here, I've never lived anywhere else.
So they're not making the plans, the commission is the ones. Well, we don't have to approve what she says. If we, if we doesn't like the regulations, then we just say, what about?
So maybe I'm not straight down, straight down that. So, let's move on, okay? We spent hour, or whatever. I want to go back through stuff. Okay, let's talk about signs. Always, we like to do, do they go for existing signs or just something coming up?
No, it. No, it doesn't, as we. If something's existing now, it doesn't change. The changes to the regulation.
I think that would even be a sign.
Find you on the sign.
It's not, that would not qualify as a sign.
Commercial.
But it's, but signage now is regulated based upon. Commercial speech. So you having something on your property. So, so actually, just if I could just finish this, so I can clarify.
So. Now. Existing doesn't count, everything that's there is okay, right?
If the signs go up.
That's a yes or no.
Show some respect, sir. Sir, you have to show respect. Allow her to, allow her to answer you without stop cutting her off, please.
If signs were permitted and at a time in the past. They met the regulations. Right? They stay, same thing with. Parking lot lighting. You don't go change it because. Now night sky compliant type stuff, so.
So those are grandfathered in.
Exactly.
So. Now, three oh, three oh five point three. One inch. Then you go by, now, these are all new.
Correct. That section E is new. It's just a section of the regs. You don't see the entire um, farm regs. In this packet, it's just where the changes are. No, the only, the only changes are in red. And then the section, the section E, that's new.
You have small lots.
Some of that stuff is out of our purview, it's regulated by the uh, by the. Central district.
Which is. No. Uh, this is permitted accessory structures in the residence zone. It's a point of clarification, just a point of clarification, they were required. Sometimes people read that something's permitted in a zone, they think they can just do it without obtaining the permit. So it's just a point.
This really takes careful, because all my life. Since I was a kid, I shouldn't say on the like. Since I was about twelve years old, I've always had cars, it's a hot. I have more than one. I have more than, and it takes several parts of different pieces putting together. So they're not, you can't, you use them for parts, and this is very specific, it tells me.
We've already acknowledged that we're gonna have to rework that section.
And I just want to reiterate the fact that um. They don't stay there. Cars and pieces you take and alter the cars or junk, so. An untrained eye would see a bunch of open somewhere in the yard, that's all we're going to see. You know, you're not involved in this, I mean, it's all in the pockets, this happened in a day. I've lived in a space about almost fifty years. And I've done the same thing the past fifty years. And I just find that. Personally, that you want to. As long as I keep them.
That's why I said there's gonna need to be some verbiage added to that.
I was the key to the government, what I'm saying, whatever. This is a farm town, first of all. You know, it's not Greenwich, not Westport, not Fairfield, but we have the right to farm, then um. You know, like, I, I guess that's part of my farm heritage. Have all the cars and the trucks and the drapings and all of them. I have three drapings. So that's three registered. Right there.
I don't even know if we have animal vehicle defined in. To be honest.
Yes, sir.
I only have a simple thing to say. Is Johnson said to Boswell, I could present you with the argument, but I can't force you to understand. That's my comment.
You guys want to go back and forth?
Another thing I would forward and ask you guys to do as well, which are. Because a lot of commissions and boards are friends of mine as well. We chat a lot of people. There's a lot of us that stay in parliamentaryized, but they aren't really talking to each other.
That's why we're here this evening.
Exactly why we have public here. So probably use your honey or anything like that. There's something you'd have to get yearly.
That's a whole other animal. There's regs for that too.
If it's on wheels, like if you have the carts that go out to the front. I don't believe so. Yeah.
Regina, are you answering still his question?
There are two places. Okay. Out of the keeping of. Farm stands. So it's in three oh five five and the farm regs, farm stands. Temporary seasonal structures and sale. Sales areas shall be compatible, so it has a. How, like the requirements. Compatible in size and scale with the neighboring uses. The maximum size, the seasonal structure must not exceed three hundred square feet. At least seventy percent of the gross sales shall be from agricultural goods pursued, uh, produced by, on the owner's. Or leases, leased farm. Or processed. Products made from raw materials that were produced on the owner's or lisees farm. The seasonal farm stand must cease. For at least six consecutive. Weeks in one year. Parking must be provided off of the public right of way. With safe ingress and egress. The temporary structure must be ten feet back from the property line. Must meet the underlying zoning side yard setbacks and shall not cause a nuisance or unsafe conditions. Temporary permit, yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this? Application? We did receive one. Written correspondence, so. I'll ask Ruth Ann to read this into the record.
This um. Letters was sent by Gil Bovert. One seventeen Scantic Road, East Windsor. It's dated July twenty second, twenty twenty four, and it's to the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Gil. Sorry for pronunciation, but Bovert, my husband Lester and I have lived. At one seventeen Scantic Road since nineteen seventy six. I would have liked to be at the PZC hearing held for PZ twenty twenty four dash ten text amendments. Unfortunately, the hearing date was moved to July twenty three, twenty twenty four, and we are on vacation. Can you please enter this statement into the record to ensure all board members are aware of it? First, let me say that I applaud the Planning and Zoning Office for their attempt to improve the current zoning regulations. That being said, there are several things of concern that I want to point out. That being said, there are several things of concern that I want to point out. With the way the proposed changes for the temporary event permit are written. The biggest concern is that the way the regulation could allow a group of individual. Or individual to start operating a commercial enterprise on a piece of private property regardless how it is zoned. Here are some more specific issues I would like to point out. The proposal put forward for this hearing with regards to four oh five temporary permits, seasonal events seems to be simply to change. From allowing events once a year to four times a year. Where are the specific regulations around the actual zoning permit required? The permit can be obtained regardless of how the property is zoned. This conflicts with the. NPC, which was supposed to be a guide for zoning. I think she needs.
P O C D.
The P O C D. A person could actually run a total of four outside events on their land throughout the year for a total of eight weeks based on. New England weather, which is real realistically events happening May through October. Where are the rules, guidelines in place to control impact to neighbors with regards to noise hours? The event can operate sanitation requirements, traffic safety and control. Safety approval is required by different departments in town, but what rules gun slash guidelines will they use? To guide their decision to approve or deny. For the changes shown below, the PCC is only engaged for the approval at the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer. If the intensity of event warrants it. What is the definition of intensity? Used and how is it measured? And then she just, she, okay, she's attached. Uh, the excerpt that has been changed for. Definition of a temporary event. Notice to neighbors is not required that a permit. Request has been submitted. Neighbors have no chance to voice their concern on a permit request. A person could wake up one morning, find out a fourteen day carnival is now planned next door. The statute is not clear if the permit is, permits are tied to the land or to a specific person. For example, if I have a field and I rent it out to an event promoter planner, then who gets the permit? And if it is tied to the promoter, then they can have four events. Can I then rent it out to another promoter planner and they can also have four events? There is no language that clarifies the permit is tied to the land.
Okay. Well, I think we've, uh, received an awful lot of comments. We. I, I know I've made a ton of notes and so has Ruth Ann and we've acknowledged there's definitely sections of this that need to be. Uh, modified. So with that, I propose that we keep the public hearing open and, uh, until our next meeting. Which. I think we go to August thirteenth. So with that, can I have a motion to continue the public hearing till August thirteenth?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing. On application PZ twenty twenty four dash ten. The town of East Windsor request for, uh, text amendments to the zoning regulations until our. August thirteenth meeting.
A motion to continue the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Manamis, this hearing will be continued till August thirteenth. You have no old business. New business. Your other business, there's been a request for informal discussion. Kevin Kaida on Meadowbrook Farms Open Space.
Yes, sir. I'm in Kita Farms Road. Figures my wife would have to step out. My wife and I, we own a parcel of land at the end of Farms Road, which is number twenty six. Uh, we live at the end of a cul-de-sac. And the. At the end of the cul-de-sac, there is a road that the town built. That goes down to the drainage ditch behind our house. The drainage ditch is for Farms Road and also for the twenty eight houses. At, for the Meadow Farms Kind of Association that the developer did. It's a gravel road. It runs parallel to the backyard of our house. So a clean out at the, uh, retention pond and it continues down to the stream. At, when the town built the gravel road. There's a chain that goes across, uh, the gravel road and that states no trespassing. However, there are quite a number of individuals. That even though. It's a, uh, no trespassing sign there, they still walk down to the dead end road behind our house. Now, as I said before, the road runs parallel with our backyard and the people that walk. By can actually see into our backyard. Honestly, it's kind of creepy when my kids are outside and people are walking by, which is. The kind of association actually owns that land. And you have random individuals that are walking basically not only on the, on the grower road, but. A number of people actually come up the embankment and start walking in my backyard around my garden, taking a look at it. And. I just find it very. It's kind of creepy, uh, from a safety perspective. And a privacy perspective, uh, we would like to purchase some of that space from the Meadow Farms Kind of Association. Um, I have had several meetings with the board of directors at the kind of association. And they had their annual meeting in April of this year. And all twenty eight homeowners agreed that they would be willing to sell us that land. The reason why I'm bringing this to the commission is when the development was originally built. There was a public hearing about the open space requirements for that area. There's currently about six acres of open space. That actually brings the, so they have more than the mandated thirty percent of open space. What we would like to do is purchase the land that's in excess of that thirty percent. That land, our intention would be to, uh, purchase. Purchase the gravel road. That goes runs parallel with our house and goes back behind our house. If we were able to purchase this land, the town has an easement for that road. The easement, I, we plan on purchasing the land with all of these restrictions in place. The road is there specifically for the town for, for access and obviously. There would be no restrictions. So really what I'm asking for from the commission is to grant my wife and I permission. To purchase that approximate one acre adjacent to our property. Leaving Meadow Farms Kind of Association compliant with thirty percent open space.
So technically Meadow Farms does not own the property. The town of East Windsor actually owns that property.
No, Meadow Farms owns the property and the town has easements.
Okay. Okay.
They have an easement, open access to the drainage ditch.
So, um.
I was just trying to find, uh, yeah, I, if I recall correctly, there's. There is provisions in the subdivision regulations on the transfer of open space.
I know, I, I know you have your own documentation. Obviously you can. Supersee what the state of Connecticut says, do better, you can't do worse. The state of Connecticut, um. Allows, would allow us to purchase the land if. Open space, if we have at least eighty percent of the votes from the homeowners.
So. I can offer. In section eight hundred. Of the zoning regulations. This property was approved as an adult, an age restricted. Housing district. The preservation of land required by that regulation is twenty percent. A quick and dirty, you know, on the G I S. Shows it's about. Twenty four percent. In that open space land. About an acre in excess. In order to modify that plan. The development plan has to be opened. So it's an application before the commission is what, um. I think what Mr. Kidd is here to. See if the, the commission would entertain. I will say in that section eight hundred under open space. It does say that, um. Preservation of at least twenty percent of the land in the development. As permanent open space deeded to the town, the state of land trust or a recognized conservation organization acceptable to the commission. Or such dedication meets the requirements of section seven of the subdivision. You were in the subdivision.
Okay.
Section seven.
Eight oh one dash five. That you're at?
Eight hundred dash eleven. It's on page eighty five.
Yeah, that's here.
So, uh.
So this is uncharted waters.
So, and so.
Thanks.
It was re-subdivided to create the road that the kiddos live on. So it's a subdivision.
Second.
Yeah.
The open space was part of the original land community, which came in under the age restricted development reg. That the, the development that they live on now was a traditional subdivision, but that came at a later phase. So this open space parcel is contiguous with Acorn Drive. It's all one parcel because the, the lots are not. The, the homes don't sit on individual lots. So it's one contiguous piece of property that loops around the back of, of Farms Road. But it's associated with the Acorn Drive development.
So similar to this request. Would have been, um.
Yeah, we just did.
We, we did one, um. Morris?
Morris Room.
Yeah. So Morris Road was a parcel that the abutting property owner, uh, wished to purchase. And, um, that would have triggered a re-subdivision. And having to make good on the loss of the open space that was part of that subdivision's approval. So it has. Same flavor.
It also brought up the question of if it's gonna go up for sale, why shouldn't it be offered to anybody for sale, not just to yourself? Go on an open market. Yeah, so I mean, that, that was the one with Morris Road when that, that became all convoluted as there now. But I, the part that I'm having difficulty with is where it talks about who can own open space. So if it's gonna stay deeded as open space, you don't meet the qualifications of who can own open space. A private individual cannot own open space.
I thought he was saying that there was surplus open space.
Regardless, if it's still gonna stay deeded because the town needs access. Through the, to that road, to the detention pond, and it's gonna be still meet all the qualifications of open space. He doesn't qualify as an owner of open space. Because it's gonna stay open space.
The ownership would change, but the easements associated, so there's drainage easements, there's, uh, and then the open space.
Conservation.
The conservation easements, those would remain. So the underlying ownership of the real estate would change, but all that would stay in place. So right now there's an, it's owned by the association with easements in favor of the town. And then the conservation easement. Is also in favor of the town. So that would, the ownership would change, but easements would.
What I'm not understanding is if the open space requirement was. Five acres based on whatever had been done. And they put into open space ten acres. Is there surplus open?
The problem is this particular spot. It has to still remain as open space because of the access to the easement. So it will have to remain open space in perpetuity, which then now triggers who can own open space. And a private individual cannot own open space. That's deeded as such. That's where, has, has this been reviewed with our town attorney at all?
I did, I did talk to, um, attorney McCann about it. And he did, because I talked to him specifically regarding. Carving off excess. Open space. And he's kind of pointed to, well, you don't really know why the amount of open space that was. Like you'd have to go back and research the hearings and the minutes to see if there was a reason. That an excess was, uh, approved and it is the approved open space. And so he, um. He didn't. He wouldn't recommend opening, opening up past, uh, approval is what he had said. Uh, that he, he did not recommend it. I, it's so, and trying to find a path for the kiddos, I mean, that's the path would be. Some type of modification. To the last re-subdivision that created, that's the road. Arms road. And assessing that, that conservation easement.
You stated that a certain individual, an individual cannot own that excess space. How about an LLC? If I, I can easy enough open up an LLC.
State or a land trust.
The whole idea is, you know. It's, yeah, it's in perpetuity as well. Because it's a private entity, then you could sell it, you know.
Well, it wouldn't. Yeah, it would be merged in the garbage system house. And as far as who else would want that parcel of land? As gentleman stated that literally the Meadow Farms, the development actually. Goes all the way around their, um, two sides of the house and it goes back down into the stream area. So as far as really anybody else wanting that land. It's, it's, it's.
Have you approached the association if they'd be willing to put a fence up there?
Whole point of my, well, I'll say this, when my wife and I purchased the property seven, eight years ago. Um, we approached the town and asked them if the ditch, if there was gonna be. Any more houses, if they could develop any land behind us. And the town said no. Until four years ago, when I had a beautiful tree line on the side of our yard going all the way down, basically. Separating the side of our house from the development. A gentleman comes in, a subcontractor of the town with a bulldozer and takes all the trees down. Next thing you know, they start building a road. I was specifically told by the town that there was no further construction going on in this area. And that is why my wife and I specifically bought this property. Because of, there, there's nobody in our backyard on basically two sides of us. And at the end of a cul-de-sac, it was quiet and it was perfect. And when they came in with those bulldozers that day to take all those trees down, it was very disheartening. And now that people use that to walk, it's a, a safety and security thing. When you have kids in our, our kids are in the backyard and he, random people are walking by. I hate to say it, but people walk up to my garden. I've had people knock on my door if they can have produce from my garden.
It's also a safety concern because the top of Farms Road is not labeled as a cul-de-sac. We have a multitude of FedEx, UPS, Amazon vehicles who come down. Previously, they used to jump the curb and cut through Farms Road to Acorn Drive. But they have since, I don't know who has put up a barrier, but they did. As soon as that road was put in, I've had FedEx drivers coming down forty-five, fifty miles an hour and driving straight through that gravel road right to the back of the ditch. I'm not a fair person to judge footage. So you tell me how much space is there between our front door and where that gravel road is?
Sixty feet maybe?
And I have FedEx trucks. This was before the town or whoever came in and put up the two states and the private property or no trespass sign, whatever it even says. So for me, it's also, it's a safety hazard. And it's a hazard in the fact that you have no idea who's walking in that back area. You, it can be anybody. It can be kids from Mill Pond. It can be people from the fifty-five. It can be people from anywhere. We've had people literally cutting through because they're looking for a dog or they're looking for a lost pet or have one right now who's just plowing through the yard, rang the doorbell and asked permission. And now they use that gravel road because they've been looking for weeks for a misplaced dog. So a fence? I don't know. There, there's, there's, it's a free for all and it's just not right. We aren't asking for, um, to change any of the rules or regulations. The town can access that drainage ditch. Clearly it affects us. It affects all the residents of Farms Road. It affects the, those who live in the Meadow Farms Association. But, um, you know, going back to when the town came in or whoever, those trees, you will also have to understand that the removal of those trees affected our property line and was, we were forced to have to remove our trees. Cottonwoods grow in clusters. When you remove yours, ours collapse. So we lost, we lost our privacy. No one ever came to us and said, this is what the intention is putting in the road. Now's the, now's the day that we're gonna do it. I looked out my window and here came a bulldozer. Nothing was cottonwood trees and then ours came down along with it. And, and we had to fix that on our property. And now we're forced with vehicles that were driving down the side of the road, gravel road, people who were walking back there. Uh, COVID, post-COVID, I have a child who's studying in her bedroom and coming out and saying, there's someone up on the landing of the ditch area looking into, into my bedroom window. You know, she's a young girl. She's in college, pulls the shades, doesn't feel safe. So wha- what do I tell her? So. I, I don't know. I, I hope that we can figure it out and give some strong consideration.
So if you guys owned it, how would you guys stop people from still coming through?
I can then now go out and say, this is private property.
You have the authority to say this is private.
Private property. It's, it's now our property to say this is private property. You can't be back here. I can't do that right now. It's not my property to say so.
Trying to think, yeah. Under the definition of open space, doesn't say it's accessible to the public?
Landlocked parcels that were open space that we've tried.
I mean, that's, I think, I think I recall something in the definitions of open spaces, in, intent of it is for public use. Open spaces.
Or to protect the environment like a.
Or, or, or natural. See, that, these were the problems arises. If our regulations say open spaces open to the public, then it becomes, even now you've purchased the property and it's still beaded as open space, it still may have a right to be able to go there. So.
Majority of the, I'll say this, majority of the open space is a massive drainage ditch. It's woods with a vertical embankment that you kind of have to crawl in all fours to get up. Then there's the conservation wetlands area back there, which no one in their right minds can go back there. I won't even go back there unless I wanna go.
So usually when the developers give you open space, it's never the prime flat land, always they'll give you
Oh, yeah.
what's left over.
Yeah. And that's, that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, we, we get it.
But that's what I'm trying to make sure that we don't have a conflict in that area also, because the definitions are written to cover all the open spaces. So the nature trails and everything else that's owned as open space.
Access to open space parcels.
The commission shall consider the proposal and make the final determination after discussing with the subdivider as to whether the land will be dedicated or be levied or any combination thereof. The commission's decision shall be based on examination of the town's existing and proposed recreation elements proposals in the town's plan and of development and recommendations of the Park and Recreation Commission and the Inland Wetlands and Conservation Commission.
But that's at the time of. Not now.
Gonna get, I don't know that we have a definition of, of open space.
A bunch of locality goes along with this.
Yep, and that it's intended.
Open space, we're looking at the excess of, so they really only, by law, they only need thirty percent. That's my understanding. Purchasing that quote-unquote excess open space, the overage.
Let's see again, like, like was mentioned, we, we don't know why they, nobody gave additional land unless they really had to. You know, so they're go- going back to at the time that it was originally developed, there had to been a reason why additional land was designated.
Because. Can't build a house on it. That's why it's.
But they could have made somebody's property bigger, you know.
You don't usually get away for enough.
Right.
They, they, the bare minimum usually.
You can sell more acreage, then the property value goes up.
Even the ditch or whatever, it'll give you, you know, the, so.
So, I mean.
If they'd be a sensitive area, that area would have been something in their record, in space.
Had to be a, a lot to be said about the developer.
That's true.
A lot.
And again, land, which is minimum, shall be set aside.
We're, we're trying to help.
I, I know, I, 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 I appreciate it. I really do.
A lot of verbiage and a lot of stuff that's.
A lot of stuff, yes.
I don't know how this helps or hurts, but it says that open space is land meant, means any land used for agriculture, parks, natural areas, forest, camping, fishing, wetland preservation, wildlife habitat, um, reservoirs, hunting, golfing, boating, historic and scenic preservation and other purposes are set forth in state and federal laws and regulations. So again, some of those uses mean people can be there.
Right.
So again.
So even, I'm just saying, so even though it's ninety percent drainage ditch, we're still going to say that it's recreational.
Or it's wildlife habitat and people wanna go bird watching.
Tree books or whatever.
You know.
Access road destroyed the wildlife habitat that's back there.
They filled it honestly to focus. The, the ditch goes down like that. So when they put the road in
Yeah.
thousands of yards of fill.
There.
Put in is incredible.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think that
Yeah.
the research should get done.
Yeah, it does.
There's a lot of legal investigation that would be required in order for this to, to go forward.
Yeah, and Mike just reminded me, he was telling me, he thinks it's, um, depends on what's written in the easement. And, um, that was something that attorney McCann had brought up too, that you'd really have to dig into the why, why the amount was set aside and then
Know what it says.
wording of the easement, yeah. It's that, you know.
If they worded for public use in there, then, then it has to remain for public use.
So it's, that'll have to be investigated.
Yes, if that's the case, I can start a land trust.
No, you have to first find out how it was worded and why, why the additional land was put there and how they defined the, the easement.
And where might I get this documentation from the town hall planning and zoning? Records? So basically ask for a copy of the.
Conservation easement.
Conservation easement, okay.
We would love to just give you an acre and go here, but we can't do that. That way.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
So basically, why was there a conservation?
How it was worded and, and why the additional acreage was set aside.
And what the terms are.
Well, Scott said. Yeah, why it was allocated for greater than thirty percent.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is a CEO report.
Forty Main Street. They are, um, BHB has been working on developing a remediation plan for the area, kind of like a mitigation plan for the area that was lost due to filling back there. So they should be heading to wetlands soon. West River Farms. There is a ZBA application of appeal to the CEOs notice a violation with regard to, um, the condition of approval that addresses transfer of the open space and maintaining the verbiage about maintaining access. With that, um, there is no ZBA meeting until till then, there's no September. So we have issues that, clothes that are yellow, the deck up and I'm north, there's a, um, mobile home park that closed out.
Okay.
She closed out a lot.
Yeah, she's making, yeah, the board is, yeah, she, she's
One forty-two.
One forty-two, uh, South Main Street. Uh, she um, was out there on July eighth and the cars had been removed. Yes, and all that removed. Sixty-three Abbey. Our notation say that, you know, there's slow progress cleaning up. One, um, eighteen Phelps, that's. A lot of these are vehicles. Ninety Windsorville. She sent out a citation.
Sixty deep, oh.
So one sixty depot is the RV that was blocking the line of sight.
Yep.
Two, that should be yellow, the two twenty-five South Main.
It's been, that's been resolved.
Yeah. That signage one.
Okay.
Two twenty-five, it's listed again. Um, we should be seeing the application coming. One sixty Windsorville, Rooster's been removed. Question mark, can't see where. So that closed. Unpermitted signs at one fifteen north, sent an NOB. So some of these are new and just Greg reminders going out.
What's up with one ninety, yeah, one ninety-three wells, they just got like a little, a little, they bought the land from the guy next door and they've got a little Yeah.
So in a mailbox.
In a mailbox.
Flowers.
In a mailbox, so.
Right, so, um, can't live in the shed, right? And so and the shed would be accessory to a primary building.
Oh, they bought that lot to live in that little shed?
No, she, she put up the shed because she has a dispute with her neighbor.
It's, it's, it's just the funniest thing, cause mailbox, little thing there and it's got twenty feet in, it's got a shed.
Yeah.
Like, I don't understand.
She wanted to, I think, have a presence there because the neighbor was mowing a portion of her yard.
Uh, just to make sure that I know it's mine and.
We don't do anything.
Yo.
So one twenty-one street. Yeah. In Warehouse Point. The homeowner said, she said they called removing chickens. Sixty-eight Ridge, signage, oh yes.
I might have missed it. What about Farms during that with those guys? I saw him bringing stuff in last week.
And, um, we went out and did a site inspection two weeks ago. Um, or maybe just a week ago. Kind of a, um, he's made a lot of progress cleaning stuff up.
Okay, I, I didn't go back there.
He, and he's, um, staging material. And I know that he's had one truck go back and forth, forth to, um, green cycle was closed. So a truck pulling in with something, it might be stuff he was trying to pull out of there. Um, right now, he's a hundred percent dedicated on cleaning up out there.
Just curious, rest of the permission, if you go back there, it goes back a long ways.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've been all the way to the edge.
Yeah.
He's, he's clearing it.
Okay.
He's clearing it.
I think back there probably five years.
Yeah.
Come back there.
Yeah. So, and then she's got, uh, those three on the last page.
NOB for vehicles and two signs.
Yeah.
As always, good progress. Yes.
Yeah.
Hey. So next item is P O C D survey.
Okay. So what we have here is the preliminary results from the plan of conservation and development. And.
Yes.
This is what came out of Survey Monkey. So they're pretty straightforward questions upfront where it's, you know, where you live. You know, who's, so there's forty seven percent live in East Windsor and work elsewhere. Twenty six percent live and work in East Windsor. Interesting.
And twenty three percent are retired.
Yeah. Overall quality of life, fifty three, almost fifty four percent said good. Thirty one percent says fair. Eight, ten percent say excellent. Five percent say poor, two percent.
People like it here. Hello.
Okay. So why did you move here, proximity to friends and family and location close to to work in the highway and housing availability and the character of the town. I feel connected or engaged with the community. Sixty percent are neutral.
Okay.
Strongly agree, twenty one percent disagree.
Eight percent.
Fifty, fifteen percent strongly disagree, eight percent, yeah. Do the hop in the thing. So, but, so how do you get your information about the town, what's going on in town, Facebook is number one.
I'm sure is.
On the website, number two, five Village Voice, and then the personal phone calls. And then it gets into how are we doing protecting natural resources such as streams and rivers?
It's almost thirty three percent already across the board, huh?
Yeah. Yeah.
Agree, disagree, neutral.
Yeah. Pass the board. What's a C minus?
Oh, this is interesting.
So then, would you pay? Would you pay a hundred dollars per year taxes to have the town acquire more open space?
Well, so forty percent are in favor.
Yeah, so agree and strongly agree. Yep, is.
Twenty seven percent are opposed.
So this one might be a little hard to figure out. Number eleven, please rank the following topics based upon level of priority.
So I think the easiest way to look at is if you look at the table, the last column has the average score.
Okay.
Okay, that'll tell you the, the weight overall.
So it's like even.
So.
But maintaining, maintenance of current conservation and development status, no change. That's the least, like that, wait, that's the lowest. And the highest is.
So the only thing that I think is kind of interesting is that
preservation.
If you look at the first line, preservation of more passive open space, that had an average score of a four, four point seven, but it was a little bit more scattered, whereas the second one, preservation more active open space. It was a little more front loaded, ninety three percent or ninety three people put it as number one, eighty five people put it as number two. So the score across the end is showing you overall. But a lot of people put that as their number one. So people kind of felt more strongly about active open space, even though overall. Well, your big solar preservation from solar was number one for a hundred and six people. Right, yeah, so even though, you know, the score doesn't tell the whole story, it's kind of interesting because you get people that felt a little bit more strongly. And the only, you probably mentioned, but my left ear is in the AC unit. We had three hundred and thirty eight total responses. So that's like double what you got in your last one.
One, it was one forty nine.
So we did the in-person surveys we had available, they had the online survey which is pushed out on Facebook, the town website, you did advertising on.
The five village voice.
Five Village Voice and then the two.
And the phone calls.
Phone calls and the electronic message center in front of the school.
Oh, yes, the pickers.
Those like digital signs. Mm-hmm. So we had like quite a and we were able to see when it was coming in based upon what was going out, like when, when the five Village Voice went out, like we had this huge spike. Yeah, you know, fifty or eighty more came in, so we were kind of watching where people were getting, which kind of speaks to one of those questions about where you're getting your information.
Yeah. Yeah.
Why not?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we didn't get a fairly decent response.
Yeah. So this one's about housing options. Ranking them. You know, one at the top or at the bottom. So we use my logic, housing for families with children comes up.
Number one.
The strongest score.
And then housing for seniors was number two and affordable housing was number three.
Collect the appropriate level of priority. Single, this should be assigned, so. It's on the trail.
Yeah, so in maintenance of existing road network, received a higher average score than increasing bicycle pedestrian facilities both on and off road.
Yeah.
Not by, not necessarily by much on the bike and pet stuff, but. But the bike and pet was strong one and two, so. Those two.
Together.
Yeah. I'd be reached at nine thirty. Well, I saw a service van come in.
Oh.
One of those dealer thing.
Yeah, that's what that sounded like.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so we have, this is the, the map just showed where these locations were in town, so this is where do you think you'd like to see growth? Route five.
So Broadbrook was number one.
Route five was number one.
Uh, just looking at number one responses, that had the highest number of number one responses. But then it drops off quite a bit in number two. Yeah. Oh, yeah, the, the Route five one forty quarters are kind of where you want most of your development, and that's where they're set up.
Yeah, so question fifteen, you know, right now realizing that I don't have those sorted, so I'll go back to it's preliminary. Let me provide this, and we are going to post all this on the the P O C D web page. So now, how concerned are you about these issues in East Windsor?
Education was number one.
Education, yeah.
Loss of natural resources.
Affordable living. A big theme throughout is the loss of sense of place or character. So education loss sense of place, practice, the, the really telling ones where people could write in, so question seventeen. What are you most concerned about over the next ten years? And those, I've provided the top four, the comments from, that came in from the survey. I was able to just make a tab page and that, that's what those are, these questions seventeen. If you look at where I put the note, the first one is education, so these are all the comments that had to do with education. And I don't expect that, you know, it's something for the commission to really read read through and then talk some more about, but solar. Did education, solar. Loss of natural character and loss of farmland. Yeah. And taxes. We can see what folks had to say about those.
And I just, I, I think it goes without saying, but just to be, just to clarify, these long sheets are the verbatim responses directly.
Exactly how they think.
Exactly.
Edited. They're in their exact form, how they came right from.
And so I owe you what to do with the Walmart site, and then we had a hearing thing out, people came up with that.
I think the education and taxes go hand in hand, people are worried about putting up big
Mm-hmm.
New school.
I also think the solar, open space and rural character could all lump together.
Yeah.
Um.
We try to keep it rural, but things change and evolve. Twice.
Um, so then the inverse, we have a lot more topics here, but what are you most hopeful for? Education, small town character, economic growth, so it's like the inverse.
Yeah.
What you're worried about is what you're hopeful for.
Yeah.
And again, those comments, I did the same with the tabs on question eighteen, the same.
Okay.
Exercise. And then is there anything else you'd like to tell us? And so that one was interesting. Those I have not sorted yet, but at least in a neat way, like with lines in between every comment, because it's just one pile. Sex, so. Again, anything else you'd like to tell us, the topics, education, keep the town rural, solar concerns and roads. Roads, if you could say it out loud, it would, you know, here, you show, we saw it a little bit earlier on to maintain the existing road network. But it comes out in here too.
Well, something about schools.
Yes. So.
It's like, I'm just looking at the survey, there were the open ended, is there anything else you'd like to tell us? It looks like there were two hundred and fifteen open ended responses.
There were, and many of them were declined to comment.
Oh, that's.
Right, many of them were, they said no.
So it was like that's a gamble.
Yeah.
No comment.
Yeah, it got counted, um, and many of them were outside the scope of the P O C D, I would say. Uh, so, well, they'll all get posted with the results on the website, but I just want to sort them by tabs so they can focus on, this is what was said about taxes, and this is what they said about rural character. And then have another. One of the things I was thinking about doing was doing stakeholder meetings, like the education issues. Bringing those to Patrick, you know, the comments and the.
And then we have to kind of, how do we tie this into the P O C D, you know, because the P O C D itself is not going to fix it.
The comments should go to.
Right, right, absolutely.
Uh, to the board at, and, and then if, because we do have town facilities and that section and P O C T, there could be a new narrative.
Very good.
To be led by the stakeholders, so then.
A lot of reading to.
Yeah, right, so the next thing coming is that we're gonna work with the agricultural commission for a farmer's listening session.
Okay.
So this week I'll be at their meeting, talking about an invitation letter, the questions.
Are you going over the whole farm regs again?
No.
Okay.
No, just, just for the P O C D.
Okay.
C D, yep, share the results with them, and then just have a session to hear with the farmers. I think.
You know, people yell at us for, it's like our fault, farming getting eaten up, but the farmers are the ones selling the land, it's not us. That's how farmers. The people are passing away and giving to their grandkids or their kids and they don't want to farm, and they don't want to farm, and they're selling it, and everybody blames up with the town.
Hard to make a living.
It's hard, hard to make, hard work, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I love to keep your real character too, but.
People have a right to sell their land.
That's how. Fortunately.
And then the other part, I wish people would realize how little input we have over the sighting council too. They make all, they make all the calls on solar developments and we can, we've written letters, we yell and scream and.
Yeah, I mean, there's a big rally with thirty one Thrall Road, a lot of residents spoke at the public hearing at the sighting council. The town was represented, Jason spoke, you know, it was I thought people did a really good job, but then you looked at the findings of fact.
They don't care.
I don't care.
There's like three hundred and fifty findings of fact. Is, really got watered down quite a bit.
But the reason they took it out of town purview and put it in the state purview is so that they can do it.
Yeah, I understand.
And there was a bill before the legislature that we talked about would have, would have required that for those projects, a local person be cited on the board, which failed.
Yeah, I was just speaking. We just put a farmer on the sighting council.
But what does one vote do?
I think at least it puts a.
You know, and we as a town, we asked a question, are these going to make noise? No. Are they going to make this? No.
And when it turns out it does, and there's no, there's no.
We, we have those questions.
Got stuck in Ellington Airport.
I know.
I still, they've come up with stalemate.
A good level. I, I.
Progress.
The part that sticks in my mind a lot is, we also, a lot of us attend the CROG meetings also. And one of the meetings I was on, one of the other members there is on the sighting council, and we actually got into a discussion about solar and and unfortunately, his basic response was, well, it's got to go somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, yeah, but start realizing proportion, what proportion of it is up here, not down here in the state.
Yeah.
It's where land is cheapest.
Where it's the easiest to put on.
Close to transmission line. It's about private developers making their profit.
Is this commission, is this going to be like on YouTube where people could see it?
It's posted on the.
Yes, it will be.
Being recorded.
Meeting, it's being recorded, it'll go.
A lot of people look at it because maybe they will get the message that you're not in control, so. I'm not going to believe it.
They won't believe it.
They won't believe it. Try the five Village Voice article.
Okay, our last item on our agenda, correspondence.
Well, that's someplace. There's another, we have no control over, for years ago, we have control.
So yeah, it's, it, oh, you have.
I have, I got it.
Okay, you have, we put in, yeah, I have the whole package, but it's, I buried it. So this is another one oh four Prospect Hill Road, I mean, how many? How many antennas? Put on the water tower. So these are more antennas.
So years ago, they would come in and do, you remember that, Mike, they come and do the whole presentation. Want to move a generator, want to do this or that, now, now they don't do anything, they go, okay, that's what we're doing.
So they're putting up interference mitigation filters on existing antenna mounting brackets on the side of the tank.
So usually regulation, they're two hundred feet of a residence, I think it was two hundred feet, they had it coming before us. So used to be regulation, they were two hundred feet of a residence, I think it was two hundred feet, they had it come before us, and it's Cut that right out.
Speaking of jurisdiction.
They still send a hundred and fifty pages to you in the mail, though.
Yes.
A hundred and fifty pages to tell you.
This is what we're doing.
Another you do a lot.
Just letting, just letting
Somewhere.
Just letting you know.
We're changing your filter, she's like it or not.
Right, trade the letter.
Nothing more to be said about that, it's just a notification that this is what they're doing, so We have nothing under business meeting, no reason for an executive session, so Anybody has anything else, but I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Take a motion to adjourn, meeting eighteen seventy seven. We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
A second, that.
A second, okay, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned at nine forty.
We haven't done that in a long time.